Good morning. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly or visually recording this message. Welcome to the Public Works Committee for August the 11th, 2016. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have temporary road closure notice.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Conley, all in favor?
Carried.
No opposed, carried. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of July the 7th, 2016, may I have a motion to approve those minutes of that meeting of the Public Works Committee? Counselor Murula, Counselor Jackson, all in favor?
Carried.
Item 5.1 is the intersection control list. May I have a motion to approve the report?
All of them.
Counselor Jackson, Counselor Ferguson, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.2 are the minutes of various subcommittees. May I have a motion to receive item 5.2, which is A through C? Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Murula, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.2, sorry, 5.2, 5.3, sorry. Item 5.4 is an information report respecting the urbanization of rural road cross-sections. May I have a motion to receive the report? Counselor Murula, Counselor Pasuda, all in favor?
Did you miss item 5.3?
I thought, that's what I thought. Sorry, let's go back to 5.3. We'll go back to 5.3. Item 5.3 is Public Works Report 16-062, Respecting Hanson Eight Migration. May I have a motion to approve the report? Counselor Murula, Counselor Conley, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you for that. Item 5.4 again is an information report respecting the urbanization of rural road cross-sections. May I have a motion to receive that? Counselor Ferguson?
I'll move it with the qualifier that clearly it's unaffordable. Based on the numbers that we received, I'm going to move receive it.
Okay. And do I have a seconder for that? Counselor Murula, all in favor?
Carried.
Item 5.5 is Public Works Report 16-063, Respecting Parking Proceeds from the Pan Am Games. May I have a motion to approve the report? Counselor Murula, Counselor Pasuda, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.6 is an information report, 16-062, about odor management at the central composting facility. May I have a motion to receive the report? Counselor Murula, Counselor Ferguson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Item 5.7 is an information report, 16-062, Respecting the Waste Diversion Transition Act. May I have a motion to receive the report? Want to speak to it? Do we, do I need to move first, no?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Counselor Ferguson?
Okay, I'd like to, I guess, would I start with Betty? Or I'll let Betty divert it if she wants someone else to answer the question. It said in the report that they will, the province will pay for continuing blue box programs until the new system is put in place. No, it's been a long time since budget time, but I don't recall that the province is paying the half the cost of our blue box program right now. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I'm going to get Emo Purpich to respond to it because he can talk about our WDL funding.
Okay, Emo?
Good morning. Through the chair, yes, we do receive annual blue box funding. It's approximately, in total, for the entire program across the province, it's above, it should be about 50%. On an annual basis, it does, it does fluctuate depending on the year, but the city does receive, you know, in a neighborhood between three and, three and four million dollars, again, depending on the year.
Is that based on tonage? Is that how they determine the 50% of the cost?
Through the chair, that is one of the factors, but there's a, is a wide variety of factors, including what kind of initiatives we have, public outreach, some of the training that we do as staff. So it's a, it's a wide variety of factors that are, that are used to come up with that number.
Okay. And one thing I've learned for the 10 years I've been on Hamilton City Council is anytime you mess with waste, everybody gets confused and upset because they get down, the public is down to a routine, the day pick up, what goes where, and we seem to be collecting along. Thank goodness, we haven't made any changes for the last, I think, two and a half years. This is short on details, what's going to change. I don't, I, I read through the whole report, and I can't see we're under the section called "How This Will Impact Hamilton," setting out what will change. Can you share with us what the act will change in the way we handle waste here in Hamilton?
Through the chair, I, we agree with you totally. The issue is, is that the province recently passed the Waste Free Ontario Act, and there are a series of regulations that will be pending over the next several years that will probably very substantially impact our operations. So in terms of rolling out the necessary regulations to implement the act, this is one of the first ones. It deals with more the, the funding side and the transitioning the existing funding programs into the new model. Now, in terms of how will that impact our operations, I think we're going to see that more in future regulations, and so this is more just about sort of transitioning existing programs and funding. But the devil in the detail in terms of what business will we be in, or could we be in, is will be contained within those, those regulations that will be forthcoming. Now, we've been told that we'll probably see some of the transitions to some of the programs that we're involved in now, tires, electronics, probably see those pending regulations earlier, but we'll probably see some pretty meaty changes or proposed changes in the next two to four months.
I suspect, through you, Madam Chairman, there'll be changes that'll affect the average homeowner. Are we still going to allow as many blue bins as they want, and it's sorted by fibers and containers, the one bag limit or one container limit for garbage, green bins, bulk pickup, yard waste? Do you anticipate anything that we do for the homeowner right now will change?
I'll take a stab, and then I'll let Emo add in. And we're anticipating that they probably will see changes on the recycling side of life, not necessarily as much on the, the household waste or the leaf and yard waste, but recycling, there could be quite a substantial change. I think we may also see quite a substantial change on packaging of products within Ontario. So, you know, in terms of recycling, will we be the ones collecting? Will we be looking at potentially local locations like they have in some other provinces? I think there could be substantial. So, Emo, I'm going to ask if you want to add to that?
Yes, through you, Madam. I think what Betty just said is fairly succinct. I think that is really what's going to happen. The other thing that I would throw into the mix is they have mentioned something about the organic strategy, so what happens with the green bin waste and, and what that may mean some, again, it's all up in the air right now. There's not a lot of information, but there could be some, some significant changes, but at this point, we don't know what, what those will be. To now, one of the things municipalities have talked about in any kind of discussions is to ensure that residents, residents continue to have a high level of service, that the service is not, that the regulations don't impact those service levels. So it's, again, the devil's, the devil's in the details, so we'll, we'll find out. And as Betty said, probably the blue box, which people probably be most impacted by, is probably closer to four years out as opposed to, you know, next 12 to 24 months.
Okay, because in recent weeks, this is the second report I've seen in this issue. Is there anything of substance in that we can get our head around to, as a council, take a resolution to influence? Are we still going to have green bins in? Are they still going to be used?
At this point in time, we don't know.
All right. And by the blue bin, are we going to require more sorting and maybe three bins in at each home, one for fibers, one for plastics, and one for containers, as an example?
At this point, we don't know.
Okay. But we keep getting this information, what are we supposed to do with it?
No, so what, if I could, Madam Chair, so what's going on here is that when the province makes changes to legislation and regulations, they post them on the EBR for a commenting period of time. And so this, what you're seeing here is the, the province became aware that the province had put this on the EBR for comments. So what will happen is every time they propose a change, there will be notification that their changes, their draft changes are out for comments. And so what we're, you're going to see a lot of these types of reports over the next number of years because as we become aware of that, we formulate our comments, we're bringing them to you as council to say, would you like, are you in agreement with our comments? Would you like to add to them? The other thing which we're doing, so that's the process we're following, EBR posting gives you a set period of time in which to respond. They're not giving us a lot of time to respond. It's a fairly tight timeframe. We're bringing our comments to you so that you're aware of what, what we're thinking in terms of staff and if there's anything that you'd like to add to them. We're also working with, we're an active member on the Regional Public Works Commissioners of Ontario Waste Management Subcommittee, so we're very much involved in, you know, knocking on the province's door to say, make sure, like, the municipalities have to have a very significant and contributory voice to changes that are made on this front because we all have substantial investments in infrastructure, particularly on the recycling and composting side of life, and so we need to be at the table as you make changes.
Yeah, no, I get that. You know, they're looking for comments. How do you comment if you don't know what they're proposing? This is my issue. And, and it's our duty to look after the homeowner, and of course, waste is a very important service that we provide to the homeowner, and it's always very sensitive every time we tinker with it. And, and so I'm hoping to get some meat in it in, in future reports so we understand what this all means. Yeah, it's great that they're coming out with programs, and it looks like the generator of the waste has to pay the provincial costs, which is the packaging side of it. So if you make the generator pay and that lives through the process, I think the generators will react to that and produce less waste, I suspect. But from a council's perspective, we need something that's concrete, something that we understand so we can comment, otherwise we just let this go as a consent app and receive it as, that's all. Thank you.
Through the chair, we've committed to letting you know as soon as we know. So in this particular case, we sent out an information update right away because we were, the commenting period is actually, I think it ends on Friday, so we're committed to letting you know as soon as we know. And I know that's not a complete answer to your question, but our world is somewhat changing around us, and we're not entirely sure how at the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I was going to actually thank Betty and Emo, because I've been one for the last six months, who have said with the Waste Diversion Transaction Act by the province, you know, it seemed to be that unfairly to staff and doing their very best, scrambling at the 11th hour to bring us any updates. And so I think I was one of the ones on committee here who asked if they could just get ahead of and provide a little more regular update. So Betty to you, Emo and Raffaela, thank you very much for this report. I'd like to ask, how is your consultation in the community going? I think several months ago, Betty, you said you were embarking upon with the four or five-year contract still ending in 2020, I believe, our current waste contract with GFL. You're concurrently, the processes, you were consulting with the community, getting feedback on the one hand, you got this Waste Diversion Transition Act from the province. So I've got concurrently these two processes, if you will, unfolding. First of all, how is yours unfolding? And secondly, are they kind of merging? Is there some overlap? Is there going to be one impacting the other? Maybe give us some indication what's happening at this moment in time, Madam Chair, through you.
Through the chair. So first, on the first question around the public outreach, we have, the tender was released, it's closed. We had very good response to it, so we have a staff group that are working on reviewing the proposals, and they'll be selecting a successful proponent shortly. We'll be back to you, I've got to look at Raf, are we, end of October, sorry, just to confirm our dates. We're hoping to be back before you in October with the strategy of how that outreach will happen so that you're aware of it. We would then undertake the outreach during the month of November. We would return to you with a, with a follow-up report saying what we've heard and start to introduce some of the concepts around what do we need to do for 2020. We hope to be before you the second quarter of next year because that's when the rubber really has to hit the road in terms of what are we, what are we going to do. Now, in terms of our changing regulatory framework, I think that's going to be a significant part of that report to you and Q2 on what our risk is of, you know, trying to proceed with a path forward, not really knowing what detours we may have to take along the road. You know, at first blush, we may come to you and say, we may want to look at these contracts, but maybe look at holding extensions on some other contracts. So the answer to your second question is, the new Waste Free Diversion Act will have a significant impact on what we put forward to you for consideration in the second quarter of next year.
Excellent, thorough answer, Betty, and obviously leading to a very complex journey and process over the next six to nine months. So I would humbly suggest, Betty, you're formally coming back in October to announce where the tender stands and then your November outreach strategy, indicating how that's going to plan out. I would humbly suggest, as often department heads do, directors do, maybe some meetings with one or two or three members of council that we could flush out before we get to the October, November, just so that on behalf of my constituents, I can maybe just have more opportunity with staff to understand exactly these impacts potentially. I know we can control locally, but the provincial one is concerning me, somewhat frightening me a bit. And I know exactly like Counselor Ferguson said, the angst that our community went through, that council went through a few years ago, Betty, you and I chatted, and one of the first things we both said when we first met about this was, if we can avoid that kind of unpleasant, a little bit messy type of debate that was kind of all over the map a few years ago, that would be very beneficial. So Betty, I look forward to the further updates, and I leave with you the thought of maybe you and Emo possibly meeting with two or three members of council between now and October to prepare us to the best of our ability. Thanks, Betty. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. I have no one else on the speaker's list. Does someone want to move? Where are we, receipt of it, of the report? Counselor Collins, Counselor Jackson, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.9, the minutes of the Hamilton Utilities Corporation Joint Advisory Committee dated March 25th, 2015. Why did I tick that off? Sorry. Item 5.8 is Public Works Report 16-066, Respecting HSR Fair Integration. May I have a motion to receive the report? Want to speak to it, or are you moving it? You're moving it? Counselor Jackson, Counselor Murula?
So, Madam Chair, this is quite a meaty report here, and I, are we to refer this to Paul Johnson's comprehensive presentation? Because if you recall, one of the things I'm going to be interested in is the whole Presto card, the cost, the Metro Links connection, HSR fair revenue impact potentially with the LRT. So when you talk integration here, as this topic is at 5.8, should we best refer this to the LRT presentation comprehensively in the fall, or is this a standalone? Or does somebody on staff want to give me some kind of a update, please? Madam Chair, through, who should I ask that of? Oh, Christine? Christine Lee Morrison, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. Counselor, I'm not really here to speak to this item today. Unfortunately, Jerry Davis couldn't be here, he was at a medical appointment. I am here to speak to another item.
Okay.
I am not aware of the comprehensive report that Paul Johnson is, is preparing, so perhaps this item could be deferred until the next meeting, or we could get back to Counselor with the, with the answers to that question.
Thanks, Christine. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no problem.
So, Madam Chair, I would like, because it would be a GIC, I would like to maybe receive this package, but refer it to the GIC presentation that will be brought forward by Paul Johnson and his team. That's what I would suggest. Thanks, Madam Chair.
So you want to refer it to the next GIC?
We never call.
So moved by Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Collins, to receive the report and refer it to GIC, and I don't know how you want to word the, with Paul Johnson.
[inaudible].
Okay. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.9, the minutes of Hamilton Utilities Corporation Joint Advisory Committee dated March 25th, 15. May I have a motion to receive the minutes? Counselor Conley, Counselor Ferguson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 7.1, we now have a presentation from Cynthia Graham and Lawrence Stasiak about the Confederation Beach Park Master Plan Feasibility Study. Cynthia and Lawrence, all yours.
Members of Public Works Committee, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to address you regarding this study. I'm Lawrence Stasiak, Supervisor of Landscape Architectural Services, and joining me today is Cynthia Graham, Manager of Landscape Architectural Services. Today, we are presenting the highlights of the Confederation Beach Park Master Plan Feasibility Study Report, PW 11005D. Before I begin, want to recognize a few people that are in chambers today that have helped us along the way. I'd like to recognize Neil McDougall, Secretary Treasurer of the Hamilton Conservation Authority, Jonathan Hack, Principal of Sierra Planning and Management, who was our consultant for the economic feasibility study portion of our review. And I'd like to also acknowledge my director, Robert Norman, Director of Strategic Planning. So why are we here today? The Hamilton Conservation Authority completed the Confederation Park Master Plan Review and Update and presented the final report to Public Works Committee on January 12, 2011. At that time, Public Works Committee approved the recommendations shown on the slide, and staff were directed to review and report back on the feasibility of implementing the master plan. The recommendation report that you will be considering today is the culmination of that directive. This image is an air photo of the existing conditions of Confederation Beach Park. I'd like to provide some orientation so that at least the plan makes a little bit of sense. So it's oriented north as to the top with Lake Ontario across the upper part of the plan. Confederation Park is outlined in the red highlights here. The gray band is the Queen Elizabeth Way. Over on this end is the, the go-karts, berangas and hutches, commercial areas. In the middle is the main park entrance in the Adventure Village. This is Centennial Parkway. Over in this area is where the Sandlot Volleyball Courts facility is, the Wild Water Works facility, Stony Creek Pond, and then over here is the former campground that we'll be making reference to later. Confederation Beach Park is a citywide park under the city's official plan. As you're aware, we have multiple park classifications, being neighborhood parks, community parks, citywide parks, and general open space. This is a citywide park with zoning P3. The park is owned by the City of Hamilton and is operated by the HCA under an agreement, a management agreement. The park is four kilometers long, 93 hectares, or 228 hectares in size. It's Hamilton's largest beachfront park. It realizes 500,000 visitors annually. 350,000 of those are trail users. Wild Water Works, last year during its peak attendance, reached 130,000 visitors. We have commercial leases on seven properties. Pleased to report that this past Monday, we learned that Wild Water Works has reached 100,000 visitors this year, so it continues to be a very popular attraction in the park. The HCA Board approved master plan update on August 5th, 2010. In that report was figure 20 of the master plan, and this has been attached in your report as Appendix A. We provide this to show you where we started with our study. The plan shown above identified current and proposed land uses, and in this map, they've used different colors like orange, green, and purple. The green includes preservation of and enhancements to the unique natural features. There are designated conversion of former campgrounds, which is at the east end of the park. It identified gateway features, which are illustrated with stars. Added new branding and signage, upgrades to the public realm. And in purple in the center area, identified potential of way to reinforce the existing commercial uses, and in the long term, the potential for some expansion with the central village opposite a new entrance at Centennial Parkway. In order to better understand the implications of the master plan, and, oh, sorry, it didn't change here. There we go, sorry. In order to better understand the implications of the master plan and to better estimate the cost of implementation, many supporting studies were undertaken. These studies are summarized on this slide. And so as you can see, we've done some enhancements to the master plan to come up with a more conceptual or schematic approach to what could be developed. We've done some archaeological studies to understand those kind of constraints, geotechnical and ge environmental, traffic assessments of the proposed entrance ways, an economic feasibility study that we'll be referring to in this presentation, and we also did a master servicing study to better understanding the capacities of existing infrastructure and what new infrastructure would be needed for any potential commercial development. So what did we learn? An analysis of all the studies undertaken to date have brought to light four key findings. Confederation Beach Park represents an undeveloped asset, both in terms of economic potential as well as the level of utilization by residents of the City of Hamilton and others. The park is an aging facility that requires capital investment. Three, the city has recreation facility needs that can be accommodated immediately at Confederation Beach Park. And four, the city has an opportunity to protect the significant natural features found in Confederation Beach Park. So in partnership with the HCA and consultation with staff and stakeholders, the master plan has been refined into this concept development plan. The plan has been attached in your recommendation report as Appendix B. And to help orient you with this, again, I'll refer back up to the slide. Lake Ontario is across the top, the gray band across the middle is the Queen Elizabeth Way. Confederation Park starts over here by Beach Boulevard, extends four kilometers over to Gray's Road. And some of the highlights again is the, the hutches, berangas, commercial areas, this area, the existing Adventure Village and main entrance is there. A new entrance is proposed off of Centennial Parkway with the potential to create a central village in the, in the center of the park. Wild Water Works, and then now we've dropped in, what we'll be, I'll be getting to as Appendix C, is a sports park development over on the campground. The essential principles and land uses of the 2010 HCA master plan remain. This plan shows more functional refinement, such as the new park entrance, schematic placement of buildings and public features in the central village, and the sports park concept. From the previous slide, we have addressed the key findings. So for example, number one, the need to increase attendance. This plan shows the potential for improvements in the public realm to increase visitation. It also shows places where commercial enhancements can occur. The park is an aging facility and requires capital investment. And again, we're recommending in our implementation strategy, public realm improvements, and also recommending that a study be done with the Wild Water Works facility as that is getting on to over 30 years in its lifecycle. The city has recreational needs that can be accommodated immediately. The campground has given us an opportunity to put some of those new facilities in. Last year, we completed the construction of an 800-meter-long trail to extend the trail system in that area, but also the campground has the opportunity to provide for some new facilities, such as a cricket pitch, which was identified in the outdoor facility study. And finally, Confederation Beach Park contains many significant features, so again, in our implementation strategy, we also acknowledge the need to provide funding for enhancement to the wood lots and the marshes. So as I've just mentioned, work that has been completed to date. So as I've just mentioned, work that has been completed to date. There were some things that we felt were quick wins that really ought to have gone forward and needed to go forward quickly. So as we mentioned, in 2015, we constructed the 800 meters of new trail around Stony Creek Pond. In January of this year, you received the report and approved the new park name, Confederation Beach Park. This is part of a recommendation from our economic feasibility study, and it was also a suggestion from the workshop that we had with area residents and tenants to try to draw special attention to this park to help increase visitation. A new logo was developed, as you can see, is placed there in the bottom left, which features a C for Confederation Park, a wave that reflects that it's on Lake Ontario, and a nautical-themed lighthouse. And a new operating agreement is in the works with HCA to continue on as our operator. This year, we're planning to continue on with some improvements in the park. We just wanted to share that with you. At this time, we're just finalizing the installation of playground equipment at the Beach's grill site. New signage and wayfinding have been created with the new brand, the logo. That has been awarded, and the contractor is now fabricating all of the signs, and they'll be installed later on this fall. Secondary gateway features at the east, north, and west end of the park have been designed. They're about 95% complete. We're ready to go out to tender with that. And we're finalizing the terms of reference for an RFP to hire a consulting firm to do the detailed design for the sports park complex. So with respect to that, we're proposing our first major redevelopment project is to be the conversion of the camp, former campground, into what we call the sports park complex. And again, to orient you on this slide, Lake Ontario to the north, North Service Road and QEW along the bottom, Gray's Road to the right. And this represents the area of consideration, which is the former campground. Bounder across the top is the existing trail network along Lake Ontario. And this is the new trail that we just constructed last year, which comes up and around and provides a loop system around Stony Creek Pond. The new concept plan features a regulation cricket pitch, and at this point in time, we've also decided that we would find it would be prudent to design it to accommodate two senior soccer fields. Although the primary function would be cricket, it gives the latitude to convert it over to two soccer if that demand was ever came forward. An intermediate soccer pitch, pickleball courts placed over in this area, a new fieldhouse, natural-themed play area, parking for vehicles and buses, a local maintenance yard, which would be in the former, which is the house that the former superintendent had, and general improvements to more trails, picnic areas, and tree planting. We thought that some of you may not necessarily be familiar with pickleball. It's a relatively new sport, but it has been emerging very quickly. And so we've now incorporated it into the concept, but I thought I'd put this slide in here just to illustrate with a few images what pickleball is. And it's basically a racket-type game where you play with a hard paddle and a perforated ball, sometimes referred to as a wiffle ball. But what shows, which is quite interesting in this graphic, is you can actually get four courts on the same space as one tennis court. So essentially, the facility we're proposing is three tennis courts in size, which would accommodate 12 pickleball courts. The sport appeals to a broad range of ages, from youths, middle-aged people, right up to seniors. So it is quite broad in its appeal to the different demographic. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Cynthia, who'll carry on with the implementation strategy.
Thank you. So in Appendix D of your report, we've provided an implementation strategy that advances the master plan through the years. We've listed projects under short-term, medium-term, and long-term priorities. The focus on initially upgrading the public realm and creation of the new sports park arena area is, as was highlighted by Lawrence. The total for the program is $40.76 million, spread over a 20-plus-year period. The report recommends funding initially of $150,000 in 2017 through the capital budget program to undertake the study for the Wild Water Works facility visioning and, you know, future ideas of what that facility should be, determining lifecycle replacement strategy for that. The report also recommends $3 million in 2017 in the 2017 capital budget program to construct Phase 1 of the sports park. And that source of that funding has been identified as the Beach Reserve. Other short-term priorities are North Service Road entrance and road modification improvements that's necessary to accommodate turning traffic and maintain flow and capacity of the road. And so those are shown as future pressures for capital budgets, coordinating with roads and facilities, and working with corporate finance. So this slide shows the aerial photo of Wild Water Works. Wild Water Works is a major play attraction that serves the citizens of Hamilton and a wide adjacent regions. It's a key anchor of the park and a significant revenue generator. The Confederation Beach Park Master Plan that was proposed initially did not address this facility, but it became apparent during our reviews that it really required a comprehensive study to determine and assess the conditions of the buildings and of the water facilities, to determine a lifecycle replacement strategy, to figure out what should be the functioning and the design of this facility in the long term. The $150,000 identified in 2017 through the facilities' capital budget program would be the assessment for that. The redevelopment of Wild Water Works is not included in the $40 million because we felt that it was premature to put cost estimates on it when really a visioning for that facility hasn't been undertaken yet. So future works in the mid and long term are shown in Appendix D and summarized on this slide. In the 2017 capital budget program, we will show these projects as future funding pressures, coordinating with the other programs and working with corporate finance. At this time, we're proposing that the plan be implemented over 20-plus years. These obviously represent significant projects for landscape architectural services, facilities, roads, environmental services, and culture. Before proceeding with any of the commercial developments, we're recommending staff would follow up with a study to determine market conditions along with our partners, and we would complete that study, and then the funding would be requested through the capital budget process for any required upgrades for servicing to support those commercial developments. So this concludes our presentation. We just wanted to highlight that Confederation Beach Park is a unique and natural recreation citywide park, and it generates economic benefits from residents from Hamilton and across the adjacent counties and regions. And in addition, I just wanted to highlight that the implementation of this master plan meets several of the priorities of the new City of Hamilton strategic plan, including healthy and safe communities because we're promoting active and healthy living, outdoor recreation, and safe routes for walking and biking. It also meets the priority of clean and green because we're enhancing and maintaining natural features. We're looking at waterfront and natural areas and trails. It meets the priority of built environment and infrastructure because we're promoting public spaces and a vibrant waterfront. And lastly, the priority of culture and diversity because, you know, the implementation of pickleball appeals to a wide range of groups and also the implementation of cricket. So at this time, we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Cynthia and Lawrence. I have a short speaker's list of questions for you. Counselor Collins, Counselor Jackson, and then Counselor Marula, Counselor Collins, and Counselor Ferguson.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. And I want to thank Cynthia and Lawrence for their presentation. And of course, the HCA staff has been terrific over the years in supporting our efforts in updating and adding new amenities to Confederation Park. And I should say that in addition to Rob Norman, who wasn't mentioned earlier, HT Lamb, along with Lawrence, have done the heavy lifting over the years. And of course, this isn't the start of the master planning process. We're a couple of years in now to the implementation. And so I did want to mention both Rob and HT, who have been instrumental in terms of getting us to where we are today. I guess, you know, for me, the big part of the update here in terms of the feasibility aspect was the private portion, which was included in the original master plan that was presented to committee and council. And there's a lot of private dollars that are envisioned on the table at some point in time. And I still believe personally that, Madam Chairman, it'll be very difficult over the years to convince investors to invest in the area that is earmarked in the plan for that central commercial village, which is essentially, you know, cafes and small restaurants and things of that. As of its location, and I'm not a restaurateur, but I've always envisioned that, you know, anyone who's going to invest in that park from a commercial perspective, they're going to want to see the water, they're going to want to be on the trail because that's where the people traffic is. And where it's located now, I just don't think makes a lot of sense. And for me, the commercial village that's there now is the baringas, the hutches, and the other amenities that are along that Van Wagners portion. So I do want to highlight the fact that at some point in time, council may see fit in the future to look at relocating that central village concept to an area that might make more sense from a servicing perspective because those costs are quite high, as well as from just a geographic location that might make more sense for the investor. But I do want to comment, though, on our immediate plans, which is the sports complex that you've referenced, Cynthia. And I think staff, along with our consultants, have done a terrific job in terms of getting us to where we are today. The funding, of course, Madam Chairman, is reserve funding, WIP funding as well. So those dollars, although it's being referred to the 217 budget process, there are sufficient funds bank currently to get us across the finish line on those immediate projects. And I know that the cricket, the pickleball group, and even some of the soccer associations are very, they've waited a long time for it. Not necessarily the pickleball group, we're new on the scene, but I know that the cricket associations, and there are several of them in Hamilton, are very anxious to see this. And this is all about, at a very high level, you know, improving the image of this area of the city several decades ago. You know, this is apart from maybe the wave pool and some of the activity on the beach of the beach neighborhood. For some people, it was an area to avoid. And over the last 10 to 15 years, this council and other levels of government and our partners, the HCA, investments along the lake, as have other communities, Burlington. And it's all with the vision of trying to encourage more people to visit our waterfront areas and make trails, construction. Those numbers in terms of visits to the park and visits to my beach neighborhood, they're just rapidly expanding. And they've come with some growing pains in terms of, you know, the waste that's generated and bike traffic and the conflicts at times that come with people using the trail and people who are cycling the trail. And so it's come with some growing pains, but it's been relatively positive from top to bottom. And that couldn't happen, the successes we've enjoyed, couldn't happen certainly without the support of my colleagues, who I've thanked almost every year. And of course, the hard work of our staff. And so I just want to say thank you. I've been closely, certainly, working with you and the stakeholders and Counselor Pearson and our residents, who reside not just in Counselor Pearson's area, but mine, and others from across the city, quite frankly, because it is a regional park, who have assisted us. This collective effort is on a world of good for that area of the city. And I think by and large, for the community as well, more people who visit the park are impressed with the amenities. There's something new almost every summer season for people to enjoy. At some point in time, this will be an all-season park. I know it is used currently all seasons, but there are some amenities on the horizon that will encourage more people to use it during the off-season, if you want to call it that. And I think, just to end my comments, you know, there's an important footnote in this whole presentation, and you briefly mentioned it, Cynthia, that's the water park. We've had a terrific summer, and the water park has always, Wild Water Works has always generated a significant amount of traffic for us in the park. And I think most people forget that it's a city asset. It's always been managed by the Conservation Authority. I was there, I think, in 1982 or 1983 when my mom was sitting in the seat as a counselor, and I was there on opening day. And it's an old, aging facility. At some point in time, council and the Conservation Authority, our planning process that you've referenced here, which is a small part, but I think will have big implications for us in the future, we're going to need to determine what that park means to the city, what are our plans, short, medium, and long term, from a capital perspective, because many of the components there are original to the park when it was constructed in the 80s. And that's going to come with a price tag. So I just want to make sure that that's not lost in this whole discussion about what's happening in the park, because as you mentioned, the 40 million and the private monies that will come in addition to the 40, the investment in terms of the servicing, restaurants and stuff, that water park have been, over the years, forgotten in our whole discussion about future capital. Did want to raise that as something that should come back to this committee and council at some point in time to have a healthy and good discussion about where we're going with that. And it is terrific news this year that we're, I don't think we're going to break a record this year, but I think based on past numbers, we're going to be top three or top five in terms of numbers of attendance. May break the record, there you go. So we're doing well this year with the park, which is a good time certainly to talk about where we're going with it in the future. And again, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done and Rob and others, our consultants and the HCA staff. You're doing terrific work, and my constituents and our constituents across the city benefit from your vision and your hard work.
Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Cynthia, Lawrence, excellent presentation. Don't think for one moment that, in my humble opinion, that the tremendous migration we're getting from the GTA coming to want to live in Hamilton over the last few years, don't for one minute underestimate that this kind of amenity, the Confederation Beach Park area, is one of the jewels that provides that quality of life that people who want to come to live in Hamilton, invest in Hamilton, and our own citizens, of course, that for years have paid through their taxes into these amenities. The fact that we're spending this kind of time, effort, emphasis on saying, how much better can we do to maximize? That's what I'm seeing and hearing today, Cynthia and Lawrence, is staff's, excuse me, best efforts and presentation in concert with the community stakeholders and the two ward counselors, primarily Counselor Collins. How best can we maximize this tremendous asset, this jewel we have known as Confederation Beach Park, for social, recreational opportunities, tourism? And don't for one minute, your map, Lawrence, finished at the Western Gateway, just past where the go-karts are, where you come in there off Van Wagners, but just go further east there, and you'll see all the restoration and rejuvenation of the beach community itself, the residential community. My goodness, executive townhomes on our beach going for $700,000 plus on Hamilton's beach that 30 years ago would have been unheard of, where we formerly had those dilapidated kind of biker cottages. And I'm sorry, but that was kind of like the state of affairs 30, 40 years ago. Counselor Collins is being incredibly modest. He's followed in the fine footsteps, he knows I mean this very sincerely, in his mother, former counselor and minister Collins, who protected and preserved the beach community and all the recreational components at that time that laid the foundation for all these future successes and what we're seeing today. Because our own citizens, many of them don't have the wherewithal to go to Muskoka and own cottages in million-dollar lakefront locations. This is exactly, in my humble opinion, where the municipal tax dollar gets its greatest bang for its buck. And my constituents overwhelmingly tell me how much they love what we've done with the beach, with the West Harbor, with the trails up in my community expanding. This is exactly where they love seeing their tax money go because their families, visitors, friends, all great to see this new transforming image of our City of Hamilton. So with that opening preamble and congratulatory remarks, Madam Chair, through you to Cynthia and Lawrence, I wanted to ask, the go-karting, places like the go-karting are still part and parcel of this future, Madam Chair, through you to Cynthia and Lawrence? I didn't hear any mention of that.
The official position on that, in the long term, the desire by the Conservation Authority is to convert the go-kart property into a reforested area. Authority is to convert the go-kart property into a reforested area, primarily to enhance with their, the policies of expanding on natural areas, as well as to provide better definition to that end of the park. Although that's in the master plan, there is no provision of timing of when that would occur. We've indicated in Appendix D a probability that it could occur in the medium term, but it's not staff's or, I understand, other position where we would put pressure on any business. It would be kind of at the pleasure of the business, I believe, and I can't really speak, because I'm not involved with leases, but I know it hasn't come to my attention that there's any urgent desire to move any business out until it's, but it's a long-term vision of what that property could be.
The go-karting place has to still be probably one of the last ones in the urban, in this kind of regional area. I think there's one up still on Upper James near the airport there. But anyway, so I'm glad you've kind of got a handle of radar on that and walking sensitively through that business there, Lawrence. I'm sensing this enhancement and building on a sports development theme. So is the vision that it will be something like a Mohawk Sports Park, like a Turner Park, with a host of different organized type of sports facilities, amenities, or kind of what you've shown here will be more for localized enjoyment? Or will it be like the Mohawk Sports Park in my area, the quad pad arena, the Bernie Arbers, the football fields that bring tournaments, things like that? Madam Chair, through you to Lawrence or Cynthia for a possible comment?
Yes, I probably could say it would be kind of like the Mohawk Sports Park in the fact that the cricket pitch is envisioned to be a regulation championship-style facility. Right now, we have three leagues operating in Hamilton that have been working on make-do facilities. They're in Churchill Park, I'm drawing a gap, they're at Mohawk Sports Park. But they're all working on what were half-size facilities, an old soccer field, a baseball diamond that wasn't constructed. From a regulation size, it's not adequate. So there's been strong desire expressed through the outdoor facility study from recreation, that we absolutely need a regulation-size cricket pitch. It was determined several years ago that this would be a suitable location for it. We've shown in our facility fit analysis that it can fit. And when we've consulted with the three different leagues, they're ecstatic about having a regulation size, and they are thinking ahead about tournaments, because they do play in other facilities in Brampton and Mississauga and Niagara. They want to bring those people here.
Okay, terrific. That's great to hear, Lawrence. Lawrence, I know it's, again, just past what you've presented here about Confederation Beach Park, but again, the only unsightliness in that whole geographic area, and I've had this chat with councillor Collins before, the unsightly Hydro lines. Have you folks, is that kind of within your jurisdiction mandate? Have you kind of explored any discussions with Ontario Hydro, Hydro One? I mean, that's the only unsightliness that exists remaining in this whole wonderful area that is just part of a renaissance, both in that area and for our city. Madam Chair, maybe through you to Rob Norman for a comment, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. Excellent comment, councillor Jackson. I don't believe the master plan, through its initial review that I'm aware of, or our review have contemplated that, but that's an interesting point that we could look at.
Thank you, Rob. And maybe, Madam Chair, through you to Ward Five councillor, councillor Collins, you might have an update?
Yeah, and it's certainly for those people who are new to the neighborhood, it's a thorny issue. And it is a common request for those people who are moving in from other parts of Hamilton, or aren't aware of the fact that they've been there for decades. So we have had the discussion with Hydro One. There are, to the best of my knowledge, I think there may be just one that touches the edge of Confederation Park. So in terms of the towers' impact on the plan, it's nominal, if any. But the towers are primarily behind the residential community on the beach strip. And Hydro One, in past conversations, the last one I would have had with them might be two and a half years ago, their comment was, they estimate it's between 70 and 80 million dollars to move our towers. And their comment was, if the municipality finds a place to relocate them and wants to pay to move them, then they'd certainly have that discussion with us. But they are not on for spending any of their own resources elsewhere. And I do know that Burlington is looking at doing the same on their beach. Burlington's benefit is that they have, I think, three or four towers. We're 20-plus. And Burlington is looking at a scenario where if they don't move them, they will invest in smaller towers. They make them thinner, a little bit more easier to look at. There's a cost to that. It's into the millions, in terms of what they're paying. It would still be a substantial cost for us. So to answer your question, it's been discussed. It's a significant, there's a significant price tag attached to it. It's not something that we like to dismiss, but there are no easy answers that present. Relocating them elsewhere.
Thank you, councillor Collins, for that thorough answer and update explanation. So maybe, Rob, just keep it on the radar, if you will. I mean, it sounds a little bit deja vu here, like the West Harbour with the CN Railway yards and the shunting station there, that they say, sure, Hamilton will love to move it if you provide for us whatever X number of billions of dollars. But again, that, if there's one tiny little unsightliness, in my humble opinion, that's it. So maybe keep that on the radar. Otherwise, Cynthia and Lawrence, keep the momentum going. We've got landmarks down there, like Berengas on the beach and Hutches, and we need to continue that wonderful momentum for all the reasons I've stated, including the economic spin-off, and most importantly, for our citizens, for over the many, many decades that, through their tax money, have put, have supported the municipal levy. And this is exactly, in my humble opinion, where it should be going. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I too want to thank councillor Collins with respect to two decades of really focusing in on the renaissance that we have experienced in that area. And it's not really known, but the northeast border of Ward Four actually is the beach strip. And the pedestrian bridge, which we developed, connects Ward Four to Ward Five. And as a result, we've seen a great deal of activity recreationally from the neighborhood. So the catchment area itself of the beach strip is Hillcrest Elementary School, which is in Ward Four. And another demographic shift that has occurred in that neighborhood is quite remarkable, because actually, $700,000 doesn't buy you much anywhere in the east end right now, as it pertains to housing. Having said that, it's over a million dollars in the beach strip now. We just saw one listed for 1.2 million. So that real estate activity and the demographic shift and how it's influenced the entire East Hamilton neighborhood is something that can't be understated. And as a result of that, we're seeing not only people's wealth increase, but obviously changing the engagement of those residents and the type of resident that is residing in that area. And that mixed use only benefits everyone that resides there. Having said that, one thing that I do want to emphasize is that the future of this city, when you look at Hamilton, there are certain aspects of the city that are aspects of the past. And I believe this aspect is that of the future. And the development of this and what the decisions that we make truly will impact us in the future in attracting more and more of that demographic shift that will enhance the city from an assessment goals perspective, from a commercial perspective, as well as ultimately where those people are, industry will follow. And I say that because I think it's important that we look at the funding of this as a priority. And I know that we talk about legacy projects, and sometimes we spend money on legacy projects that doesn't really have a return on our investment. I can reference the stadium as an example. But I would say that if anything would be a legacy project, it would be this. And through you, Madam Chair, what I'd like to suggest is that the reem property, once sold, should be, that those monies will be reallocated to the future fund, which should be a serious consideration for this project. And I'd like to formally mention that today. And unlike other issues where West Hamilton has always the best of everything, in this particular case, East Hamilton has the only beach that you can actually swim in, and safely, to add. And 90% of the times throughout the year, the water in Lake Ontario, particularly the East Hamilton beaches, are swimmable. And we've noticed an increase of that this year as a result of promoting not only the future beach crawl, but trying to tap into cooling initiatives, particularly this summer, where the weather is playing a role in trying to encourage people to find that avenue. And Lake Ontario's been an incredible opportunity for that. And if you just drive down today, you'll see the increased activity, and we're just at the start of promoting that. So the future of the cities I mentioned will play a role in having this as part of that. The private entity component, which is addressed and councillor Collins mentioned with respect to the commercial, is also something that we should be looking at. But one thing that I've noticed in this plan, and through you, Madam Chair, is any potential residential development within the plan itself. Was that ever considered? And could it be something on the back burner? I know that councillor Collins has consulted with his residents, but something that we could look at 20, 30 years down the road, or even sooner, perhaps. Unlike Burlington, where they look at our smokestacks, we have a much better view, looking away from them. So, and any thought along those lines?
So through the chair, to the councillor, the initial 2010 HCA master plan did not include residential development. So as staff, we were asked to respond to that 2010 master plan. So it hasn't been part of the conversation to this point. Having said that, we're looking at implementation over 20-plus years. So if conditions change, or if it's the will of council, we could take a look at that at some point.
It's just that, I think it's an untapped gem, as we all can see. And without actually taking away from public access, I think it's something that should be at least assessed as a potential development. Lastly, I just want to focus in on one other thing, is that with the pending beach crawl and this development itself, if perhaps there's a synergy in moving or advancing this project with the crawl itself, and how we can find those synergies and how we can move forward accordingly.
Sorry, through the chair, I didn't-
Okay, so I'm probably not familiar with it, but we did pass a, an initiative, next year, we're going to process through an RFP to have a beach crawl.
A beach ball?
Crawl.
Oh, crawl.
Crawl, yeah.
Okay.
Crawl. Beach volleyball. So what I'd like to do is look at the phasing approach to this and how perhaps there's a synergy between the two, whether it be a band shell or something along those lines, where they can act in a synchronized fashion.
So through the chair, of course, you know, if there was an event or something like that, we certainly would coordinate any construction to make sure that we weren't impacting those events. And yes, we can look at synergies between the developments to, you know, enhance that event.
Wonderful, and that's it. So again, many thanks for all your work and look forward to it coming to fruition.
Councillor Ferguson?
Chairman, I'm sure hope that, based on Sam's comments, that the councillor from Board Five is charging a consulting fee to the councillor from Board Four. I know from being on the Conservation Authority that Chad has been a leader since, I guess, 2010, when we started this process. But just two quick things. Number one is pickleball. It is an emerging sport, and it is, people call it sissy ball, because it doesn't move fast. But as a tennis player, I'm going to speak on behalf of the tennis group, can they, any public court I've been on, they're double lined, white lines for tennis and black lines for pickleball. Are these going to be the same way, where either sport can be played or strictly pickleball?
Through the chair, the intent is to create pickleball-specific courts in this location.
Won't be a multipurpose court then. Because tennis, as you know, Cynthia, we did the tennis courts in Ancaster. Membership of that tennis club's gone from 80 to 500. And so, facilities, but more importantly, tennis is on a rebound. And I just wonder whether you can double stripe them similar to what we see on many public courts?
Through the chair, I'd like to give an opinion. Pickleball is a new sport, leads to my understanding. And although we've designated a space, we're not 100% finalized on what the form and shape and function will be of that facility. But I think you raise a good point, and I could take that back to our design team to say, is that a possibility to consider? We'll work with Recreation. They're going to be essentially responsible for programming. And when we determine what the popularity is and the use of the facility, that might help determine how the courts get lined out.
Interesting, you say you get four pickle courts on one tennis court. Any ones I've planned is two pickle boards on each tennis court, because that. And just put that out there as a comment. The other one is, there's a boat ramp at Berengas. Have you given, there's a lot of boaters from Rochester and Toronto and Hamilton and Fifty Point that look for destinations, and they've got some pretty thick wallets. Is there anything in your plans to build it? Because that's a, well, it's popular at Berengas and used, it's not terribly safe. There are three-foot-square modules that float, and, you know, 200-pound guy like me, when I step on them, they flop all over the place. And, you know, you can get knocked into somebody else's boat, or wouldn't be as bad, but you can get thrown into the water pretty quick. Are you intending to do anything to put a docking facility in to track the boating traffic?
Through the chair, boat launch has been addressed a year ago. An idea came forward by some anglers for us to reconsider recreating the boat launch down, I don't have the illustration up, but there was the remnants of the boat launch there. So we did an investigation with consultants to determine what would be involved and reported back to council, Public Works Committee, about a year ago. The biggest issues we have there is the exposure to Lake Ontario, extreme wave energy and fetch. And the most significant issue was longshore drift of sediments. And so we're finding that the boat launch that was there was actually filling in on a daily basis.
I fully understand the boat launch. You can't load on a trailer with a thing bouncing all over the place from the waves. But I know Burlington abandoned their idea of boat docks at their pier. They had some other problems, and they abandoned that idea, I think, because of the shortage of money. But if you considered putting a boat dock, not a ramp, not a launch, but a boat dock for boaters to come in from other cities to tie up and use our facility and spend some money?
And through the chair, in this study, no, we didn't, because it wasn't identified as part of the original master plan that we were asked to review. But if it becomes the preference of Public Works Committee and Council, I guess it can be considered in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I have councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to echo all the comments around the table today, and thank staff who have done a tremendous job, not just now, but over the last number of years. It's been a long process, and councillor Collins's involvement in this for many, many years. I can tell you without a doubt that I get calls or emails, at least weekly, from residents in Toronto, very grateful and thrilled that Hamilton has protected beachfront access. And actually, it surprises me every time somebody gives me a call up, because it's just out of the blue. Nobody knows, they just find the name and they send me a message or email me. And they're very pleased. They actually travel from Toronto to come here and enjoy our waterfront, which is a great, it's a great feeling to know that we have it there. So we should be commending our former councils that had the wherewithal and the thought to protect this. So I want to be sure that we do keep it in the city hands. And I'm really pleased with the input and what's going to happen on the Easter League side, because obviously that does affect Ward 10. And I think it's very exciting. I'm going to go out and get my pickleball paddles very soon, because I'd be very excited to go out and try this. And we, you know, it's interesting, I did want to ask a question, and total value you're saying is $40.7 million over 20 years. I'd be curious as to what the land value of this whole area is at this time on the open market. And I'd certainly love to ask staff if they could investigate, because I'd be curious that it far exceeds what we're putting into it now. So that's a good point to put forward. The other is, I wanted to ask, as far as the costs for all the improvements to come forward, we are using development charges, dollars that will be coming towards, that will be used for these improvements? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through the chair, the funding sources for the future capital budget asks haven't yet been determined, and we'll work with corporate finance as those come forward. But I do believe that development charges have been used in the past year, so it's possible that it could be partially funded through that.
Excellent, thank you. And the reason I raise that is that everyone knows in Ward 10, there's been a tremendous amount of development on the waterfront. And I know a lot of development charges, dollars have been contributed to the city capital pocket. And I'm thrilled that a lot of it will go into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Conley, please.
Thank you. First of all, I'm all in favor of it. I think it's great for the city. I, but every ward's going to benefit or could benefit from it. And I know my family have benefited from it this summer, so I'm looking forward to it. But I do- it. But I do have a couple of questions. And it says on page 5 of 17, currently, the open space capital block is approximately $3.2 million annually, that is used primarily to fund neighborhood park development across the city. And then, a little bit down further in the next paragraph, it talks about funding requirements for the master plan project is outlined, exceed the annual open space block and facility block, and would impact timing on other park developments and facility projects. I'd like to know what projects are going to be impacted, and is this going to slow down development in other parts of the city? And I'll be parochial in Ward 9.
So, through the Chair, we just wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, we're restricted with our annual funding every year. The plan, the implementation plan, that shows 20-plus years, has taken into consideration the other priorities within the city, as well as possibilities for grants and things like that. So, it's not our intention to delay other projects that have been identified. We would be working with Corporate Finance to find funding solutions to put this project forward.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not talking about this project per se, because I think it has to go forward, but I don't want to delay something that was supposed to happen in two years, that won't happen for eight years now because of this. And I think these concerns should be brought up at budget time, so that we can talk about it, and not find out afterwards, well, we haven't got the money to do this park or that park, because neighborhood parks are important to neighborhoods. So, I just want to emphasize that, but I'm not against what we're trying to do. The other thing I just thought about is, have we ever thought about hotels, or a commercial hotel on the beach strip? I don't know if that'd be an attraction or not, but I think it'd be nice to have. But have we looked at the commercial hotel business end of it? To somebody?
Through the Chair, I think our intent, and through the feasibility study, it became clear that in order to have successful commercial enhancements at Confederation Beach Park, we would need to do the improvements to the public realm first. And so, it's our intent that we move forward with those public realm improvements, and then do a follow-up study to determine what sort of commercial is viable with the market conditions that have been created. So, at that time, we could evaluate what sort of commercial would be part of it. I don't think that, you know, hotels or things like that have been part of the mix, but at that time, we could consider that.
When would that be taking place, through the Chair? Look at that part of it, you're saying you're looking at...
Through the Chair, I think once we've taken a stab at implementing some of those improvements, like the gateways, and the sports park, and some of the road improvements, then we could take a look at those conditions at that time. So, I don't have a date for you. I think we would want to see how quickly and how successful we are with implementing the first priorities.
Thank you. I don't have any more speakers, so may I have a motion to receive the presentation, please? Counselor Collins, Counselor Jackson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. And Counselor Collins will move the approval of Report 11005D, seconded by Counselor Marula.
I think Counselor Conley raises a very valid point, in terms of the funding strategy, and it is something that I discussed with both Cynthia, and Lawrence, and Rob during our last meeting. And as you recall, our waterfront development, that includes the West Harbor, is a corporate strategic priority. It's in our strategic plan currently, as one of the top three priorities of Council. And in the past, Confederation Park, the plan that we see here, along with the West Harbor improvements that we're undertaking for the past number of years, were lumped into one strap plan, sort of budget file. And for some reason, over the last two years, when it's been presented during the budget, it hasn't been included with the West Harbor in terms of the funding strategy. So, it will compete with other projects years from now, probably three, five, six years out. And I would like for finance staff to report back on how Confederation Park was separated from the West Harbor, so it doesn't impact neighborhood parks, and it's not competing with nuts and bolts and basic projects that neighborhoods across the city, and councillors, and community groups are working on. It shouldn't be in competition with those. It should be in a class by itself with the West Harbor. And so, I would like, whether it's direction, or whether it's formally added, that finance staff report back on the financing strategy, because Counselor Conley has picked up on a point that has been discussed, but has yet to be resolved. That is an amendment.
And if I can include in that amendment, that Counselor Collins is moving, which I'll second, is that the future fund from the sale of green property be assessed as a funding source. I'll see what you have.
So, Madam Clerk, are we moving something amended, or are we moving...
Is that amendment first?
Okay, so, the amendment, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula. All those in favor?
Fair enough.
And the main motion, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried, thank you. Item 8.1 is a report respecting pedestrian crossovers. Are there any questions or discussions on that report? Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, and I just was up talking to Martin about my issues, and I just want to put it on the public record. The one we've been waiting for forever, in fact, Council supported asking the ministry to put it as a pilot, was the crossing at the rail trail, Rail Trail and Wilson Street. And through you to Martin, can we also add that one to your list?
Counselor, we'll fit it in at the end of the list, thank you.
Okay, and the roundabout you're proposing at McClure and Wilson, that's brand-new, it's entirely commercial. If you want to experiment with a roundabout, I would prefer you do the one at Shaver, where all the residences are, where kids are crossing constantly in order to get over to McDonald's at the Walmart Plaza. Can we amend that from McClure to Shaver? Any thoughts?
I'm sure, through the Chair, I'm sure we can look at including Shaver. I'd also like to look at the existing conditions. AODA-style ramps are slightly larger, have a gentler slope than regulation curb cuts that we've been putting in over the years. So, this is a new venture for us, to put in these AODA ramps, and I just want to be sure they're available, otherwise we'll be into construction, and then I might have to delay it a little bit. But yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, can we leave it at this, that... Because Shaver Road's also new. It's only three years old. I suspect it's AODA compliant, probably Mr. Moore might be able to answer that, but maybe we can meet on-site, and if we could do Shaver, because the McClures were longos and lows and all that, and it's all commercial, and there'd be very little traffic down at that location. I'd rather see it up at Shaver, where all the residential areas... So, it sounds like I don't need a motion, I can just work offline with Martin on this to maybe move a McClure to Shaver, providing it's AODA compliant. Thanks, Madam Chairman.
Counselor Doug Conley.
Thank you. I was wondering if... We had talked since I've been on Council about one of these crosswalks at Sydney and Highland. And I know it was delayed, because when I first heard about it, it wasn't approved by the provincial government, then it was approved, and I've talked to Dave Ferguson probably 10 times, and Martin yourself, two or three times, and I don't see it on here. And it's been a year in discussion, so I'm asking if it can be done as one of the... Or can I just...
Through you, Madam Chair. What we're hoping to achieve with this list of projects, to the committee, you did cut our teeth on four, or five, or six projects to get some experience on how to install these. Along with that, needs to be a fairly robust education campaign for the public motorists and pedestrians. What we will want to do is come back in the spring with another list of crosswalks that we're looking to do. The issue that we have now is one of, we've got limited time this year to finish up additional projects. Our operations group are pretty much at capacity in terms of existing commitments. So, that's why we came forward with this particular list. We didn't want to ignore other requests. I think you saw in the report that we had 140 requests that we wanted to move forward. But what we will want to do is work with Martin's team, and talk to, you know, different priorities for their particular ward. That's why some of those things aren't on this particular list.
With all due respect, we just suggested another counselor to do a couple more, and it was no problem. And then, all of a sudden, there's a problem here. I've been working on this for over a year, probably a year and a half. I had no indication it wouldn't be done, and all of a sudden, I get a report in front of me saying, all the reasons... But those reasons didn't come up three minutes ago, so it's not on here.
I understand your point, Counselor. I want to be cautious in terms of overcommitting. What we want to do, and this is a discussion we have regularly in traffic, is what we want to do sometimes is, we can't actually capably, in terms of operations, with our existing commitments, we should have been a little bit not as jumping forward to do these things. Because I think what's going to end up happening is, every council around the table's going to want one or two projects. And we could say, yeah, we'll do those, but we're not going to get them done this year. That's the reality. So, we want it to come forward in, you know, a logical format to do those things.
I don't see any logic in this, I really don't. And I'm going to make a motion, and might not even get a second, or but that Sydney and Highland Road be part of the PXO projects for this year.
Do we address that motion now? Or do we wait? No? Okay, so, moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Marula, that... You want to explain again?
Highland and Sydney, the PXO installation be done there. He added to the list, yes.
And Counselor Ferguson?
Just for clarity, on mine on the roundabouts, I wanted to move it from one to McClure to Shaver. Not Jerseyville, the rail trail and the Wilson... I'm just going to meet Martin on-site to see if Conley would work there. And it's been requested for quite some time, but I'll support this motion, but for clarity, I didn't just get a couple added, I switched them.
Another conversation? Okay, so, moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Marula, that Highland and Sydney be added to the list for 16 or 17?
Well, what's this list for?
16, 17.
16, 17, okay, all right. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I want to be on the record as supporting this report being brought forward. We see the fine display there, that traffic Martin White and team have brought in, so I think that's important, that visual is right there. And hopefully, Martin, that type of visual, both in that large form, and obviously through our websites, and whatever other manner, Martin, you can do it, to get that messaging out there. The communication, as you said, is going to be an educational piece to begin with. Martin, I still get asked by constituents, when this news first appeared a few months ago, I think with your initial report, that people have asked me, Tom, isn't this like those existing ones that have been in place in Toronto for years? Where they got the big X, the yellow, pedestrians cross, busy street, and traffic has to stop as pedestrians are crossing? And I'm going, well, our traffic staff have said, yes, kind of, but not really. So, Madam Chair, through you to Martin, one more time, Martin, is this like what they've had in Toronto, or is this somewhat different? Please.
Yes, kind of, but different, Counselor. Through the Chair, the HTA has actually changed. It's changed to allow the installation of three styles of crossing. I'm nervous about some of them, because they don't have enough visual warning to motorists in the first place. I have to honestly say, I'm a little concerned moving forward, because I believe the province has dropped the ball on educating across the province. This is a provincial change in statute.
I see.
Allowing people, or forcing people to drive in a different fashion. In Hamilton, we are going to be taking the lead for educating our drivers, but if somebody's visiting us from somewhere else that may not have been exposed to any further education, then, you know, we have an issue, I would think. We're going to be doing a pretty comprehensive education campaign. We've already conceived some ideas, and we're going to be moving ahead with that through our communications group, and I'm just hopeful that it has effect. The reason we only picked a few locations is we want to control how many places we go and do this, and it gives us the ability to bring the police services along with us, and man these locations upon opening, literally with staff handing out brochures, and making sure that drivers are aware that they have to stop for pedestrians in the road. That's not an occurrence that happens in Hamilton at all at the moment, and, you know, if you're driving in somewhat of an oblivious state, you can simply miss the pedestrians. So, we have a lot of work to do.
Very well stated, Martin. Thank you for that response, and that raises my comfort level in terms of your go-slow approach. So, obviously, the two you've mentioned for this year in my ward, to me, as I said to the reporter from The Spectator, they make imminent sense to me for a variety of reasons. Number one, it's at Lime Ridge, and where the rail trail, the pedestrian rail trail that goes through the heart of Mohawk Sports Park crosses. So, you've already got thousands of users at Mohawk Sports Park, for all the organized sports, playgrounds, the football, Australian football, rugby, you name it, quad pad, baseball, track and field, soccer fields, you've got it. So, you've got thousands of users potentially at the 66-acre park abutting, this location. Further down, your second location, Ward 6, again, which I'm grateful for, at the Brow and Lime Ridge, which is a few hundred feet past the rail trail in Lime Ridge, that leads to an area that is just growing in popularity, becoming even a more destination place, being the Albion Falls tourist area. Go there on a weekend, hundreds of cars, families, jam-packed all three parking lots at the end of Mud Arbor Road, and above the falls there, where the lookout platforms are. So, for me, I'm very pleased, I'm grateful, and again, but with some trepidation, as you said, Martin, this is a new thing in terms of changing driver behavior, as pedestrians will be crossing these two places in my area. But I'm hoping, and I'm thinking it's going to be successful, because the growing amount of people, becoming such a greater people place, both Mohawk Sports Park, that's been there for years and growing, and the Albion Falls area, Mountain Brow Boulevard, the $5 million that Gary Moore's people did to reconstruct the Brow, just east of there, from the top of the Kennelworth, over to near the Quad Pad Arena, now where many, many families are enjoying the escarpment panoramic view. So, my point being, these two locations, drivers will already, I believe, except for possibly visitors outside of our city, will be prepared for lots of activity of walkers, hikers, in this area of this block, where you're recommending the two Ward 6 locations. So, I thank you for them, I think they're going to work there, and anything that helps to promote and prevent, and be proactive with further pedestrian safety is important. And Lori, just a typo, on the 2016-2017 chart, further down page two, Martin's people, Lime Ridge and Birchview Drive, showed Ward 8, that's actually Ward 6. So, if I could just have the Lime Ridge-Birchview typo there, saying Ward 6 for the future, that would be great. So, with all those comments and thoughts in hand, Madam Chair, I'm happy to support 8.1. And thank you, Martin, and good luck with this new initiative for our city.
Thank you. Counselor Farr. Oh, I do have to go to committee first. What do you want me to do?
You're the boss.
Okay, I'll go to committee first. Counselor Collins?
I'll defer to Counselor Farr.
Counselor Farr.
I was really here for the temporary road closure approval for the United Culinary Event on King William in Ward 2. That's a notice of motion, but I may not be around, so I'll very quickly say, I hope you'll support it, it's going to be a great event. Anyway, and I thank the movers in advance for doing so. I'm sure it's a no-brainer. Anyway, very quickly, I want to thank staff. I think Counselor Jackson said it all, so I don't need to beleaguer. There's areas on this initial list, these five locations, where they're chosen well, because I think there's already a... because I think there's already a general driving public out there that is going to be and is already very much aware of the pedestrian activity. The statute from the province, our staff, Madam Chair, had been talking about this for years. Since David Ferguson was hired, I can remember him talking about this new Provincial Highway Traffic Act addition. And in community meeting after community meeting here in Ward Two, folks have been advised and they continue to ask questions about it. And in fact, with the Plan Local initiative in Ward Two, where we're taking a million, we have taken $1 million of area rating capital reserve money for specifically pedestrian safety initiatives and mostly related to residential roadways. We have actually had a number of requests within that envelope, within that ward-wide contest, to have PXOs installed. And some have made the shortlist. The people have voted and they have asked for PXOs. That said, they're also well aware that we want to appreciate things that Martin has shared in the past with respect to going slow, making sure we do it right, and that huge piece that councillor Jackson reiterated on educating the public. So people are respecting that. But with the, through you to Geoff, I heard you say in the spring you'll be coming back, and in the spring when you come back, spring 2017, will we be able to include, while that Plan Local vote is not official yet, it's coming in days, and you're going to see that the residents have asked for these PXOs, and you're going to see the locations where they've asked for them, are we going to be able to include them? And when we do, if we can appreciate that it's a different funding source and if we can include that too. But would it be this spring that we would identify those Ward Two resident-led PXO initiatives?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think the spring would be fine. We'll probably start consultation with the various ward councils before that so that we have plenty of time to prepare our annual Hamilton Strategic Road Safety Report. So that's where we're looking to include the next set of PXOs for approval.
Great. And I want to emphasize, I'm not looking to expedite. I understand there's a long queue, and I'm very impressed. I mean, it's quite clear that pedestrian safety is desired throughout all of our wards and throughout all of our city, and our Ward Two residents understand that too. So I'm not looking to jump a queue through this separate initiative, just advising especially Public Works Committee that there'll be a different funding source and that we're appreciating the study that needs to take place first. And that would probably be 2017, and the residents that were part of the Plan Local contest will be advised of that, and that 2018 is where we're hopeful we'll see the installation. And is it safe to say through you to Geoff or Martin that by then we'll have a heck of a lot more PXO? If we do things right now with the five, what's the general average we can expect in 2017, 2018, and beyond for installation, understanding that, as it says in the report, staff have received beyond 140 location requests since we've been engaging on this?
Through the chair. I don't want to negate any of the locations that have arisen and been asked for, councillor Conley's, councillor Ferguson's, the ones in Ward Two. They're all extremely at the top of the list. We are now analyzing almost 200 locations. Since the report commenced, we've had another 60-odd locations come to us. They're coming through the ward councils, through constituents. To answer your question, we should identify those Ward Two ones as early as possible. The limit on how many we can do is more limited by the ability to put staff on these projects than it is the funding sources. We have more money than people to do the work. I would think we can do upwards of 25 to 30 a year, as long as you don't quote me on that, by next year. But that's kind of what I'm expecting to do in an annual, as part of an annual program, properly funded through the Red Light Camera Reserve. So before you commit your funds to a council, maybe we should have that conversation about how we're going to fund the Ward Two ones and any others in the rest of the city also.
Jason Warren and I have already had those conversations. We're in the midst of those conversations, Martin. I completely agree with what you're saying. There's so many resources with staff, so many resources with funds, and we want to do it right. You've made a lot of people, I can safely say on behalf of councillor Johnson and the residents of Ward Two, colleagues that have been here for a while, or at least last term our council will recall, Brian McCady and I did a citizen-led walkabout of Queen Street, and the citizens identified areas of Queen Street that needed to be addressed. They even came up with concepts and ideas on how to implement some of those pedestrian safety initiatives. We've managed to implement over the last few years some of those suggestions. This was a big one. This is a big one. And I can tell you safely on behalf of councillor Johnson in Ward One and the residents of Ward Two, they're going to be very, very pleased when they see the PXO in the coming months at Herkimer and Queen Street. So thank you very much to staff, and we'll continue to work closely together on PXOs and other safety initiatives. And if there's any way I can assist, I'm doing a newsletter soon, ward-wide, to help promote how the rules work. I'll be more than happy to sell some ad space to our traffic crew for my ward-wide newsletter.
Thank you. Councillor Collins?
Thanks, Madam Chairman. And Martin answered my question in terms of the capacity that we have on a go-forward basis, the 25 to 30. And it is something that's increasingly being requested more and more by neighborhood associations, parent councils around schools and things of that nature. So I'm just excited to see that this is finally here. I know that councillor Marula has talked about this several times over the years in terms of the provincial legislation that needs to change. So certainly kudos to councillor Marula for bringing this forward originally. And it's, I know that, as councillor Farr mentioned, a number of residents will be happy to see that it's finally here. And to know that we have that capacity, I think, is healthy in terms of knowing that we will be able to respond to the needs on a go-forward basis. So thanks to Martin for answering the question.
Thank you. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to councillor Collins for the kind words. And on that front, when the motion was regarding pedestrian right-of-ways, and with the support of this council and previous councils, was brought forward, it was to assess a universal pedestrian right-of-way. Do you think, through you, Madam Chair, that this is the first step towards that? Or are we, is the province just assessing incrementally or just in isolation of pedestrian right-of-way initiatives?
I think they're considering all pedestrian right-of-ways, but I would honestly tell you that I feel that this is their move for the next period of time. I don't think you'll see any further changes with pedestrian right-of-way crossings over the next few years. It's not something they're contemplating at this point in time.
So you would assume, though, that they're looking at it incrementally and then allowing or gauging the success of it?
I would say I hope so. There's no indication of that. I'll put it that way.
All right. So on that front, could we perhaps formally request a response from the province indicating what their intent is for the future? Just so we have an understanding.
Through the chair, all that's possible. I can also, traffic staff sit on a group called Rosco, which is essentially a road safety group made up of the municipalities in Ontario. And maybe before I move forward and ask the MTO for a formal answer, I'd like to perhaps get that group to come forward with.
Sure.
Because MTO sits on that group along with Toronto, Ottawa, and all.
Okay, excellent. So why don't we leave it as direction today? And once you know that answer, if you could forward it to us either in a report form or by email, that'd be greatly appreciated. Is that okay?
That's certainly okay through the chair.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Martin.
Thank you. And councillor Collins, if you wouldn't mind taking the chair for a minute, if I could turn it over to you, I have a couple of questions and maybe a motion. So through you, Mr. Chair, to, I don't know whether it's Martin or Geoff, I think that staff is well aware that I've offered the intersection light to staff at Ogilvy and King Street West in Dundas. They can put it anywhere in the city if they change it to a crosswalk. So I have been working with the BIA and with the retail businesses downtown to establish a spot between Ogilvy and Miller's Lane where we could put a crosswalk. And so my concern today is whether or not, if I don't bring something forward now, I'm going to lose the opportunity to have that crosswalk installed in 2016 or '17.
Through the chair, I'm not particularly aware of this issue myself. I haven't, staff haven't brought that forward to me. I would say it's never too late to do anything. If it works and if we can get in there, there's always a possibility of squeezing in something. But we're limiting what we're offering at this point because it's a limit on how much work we can do in this construction season. There's 140 to 200 other locations, and I can't do them all. Council, of course, can ask me to do them or direct me to do them, and we will comply.
Thank you. So my concern about the one in Dundas is that it is a safety issue. The light at Ogilvy causes such a backup between Ogilvy and Cross because of the proximity to the required traffic signal at King and Cross, that it's, it is a dangerous situation. And so in order to remove the traffic signal at Ogilvy, we really need a way for the many hundreds of people who are downtown Dundas to get across the road between Cross and Sydenham. And so I would like to put a motion on the floor, if I can get a second or, to add King Street West between Ogilvy and Miller's Lane. Direction would be north-south to this list. And I'm willing to talk about, if necessary, in the future, the priority between Governor's Road and King Street West, if necessary. So I would like to put that motion forward, that it be added to this list.
Okay.
Added to the list as it is now.
And it's just the first location that you referenced, the other one, talked about, it might come back?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a second or, and councillor Marula, any discussion on the amendment that's been put? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Here's back to you.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more speakers on this issue. This item number 8.1, so, sorry, moved by councillor Jackson, thank you, and seconded by councillor Conley, as amended. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. That was item 8.1. Item 8.2 is a, okay, let me finish the sentence, is a report respecting a request for access to capital reserves to fund the 2015 road restoration program, moved by councillor Collins, seconded by councillor Marula. And councillor Pearson wants to speak.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. And I know Nick Wittrus isn't here, but Andrew Gray says, good morning, Andrew. If I could, through you, Madam Chair, my only question is, Andrew, will this address a number of the long outstanding restoration works that I have in my own ward to be completed?
Through you, Madam Chair. We'd have to look into those addresses specifically, but the intent of this report is to cover the number of cuts that will result of winter 2015. You recall, we had a terrible winter with a number of frozen water services, water main breaks, which had a large increase on the number of road cuts. I'm happy to talk with you offline about those particular properties, and if they've been outstanding for a long period of time, we'll certainly get them addressed ASAP.
I will be pleased to do that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great to see the collaboration between directors Moore and McKinnon. I am happy to support this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Having no other speakers, may I have a motion to approve 8.2? We have it. Do we? Councillor Jackson? And councillor Ferguson? All those in favor? 8.3 is a report respecting the use of vacated space at 330 Wentworth Street for the HSR. Moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Jackson. And did you want to speak to it? Councillor Jackson?
Madam Chair, this is, so this is encouraging because all we've heard now for a while, maybe the new acting director, Gerry Davis, or Christine Lee Morrison. This is encouraging because what we've heard is that there's, what, about 260 buses, Madam Chair, in our fleet, and approximately 60 of them just simply cannot be accommodated up at the Mountain Transit Centre on Highway Six. And so I know staff were exploring formally with director Dave Dixon, looking at 330 Wentworth Street, that used to be back in the 80s, the original bus barn. So it looks like you're going to be able to put half of the 60 that currently you can accommodate if we support this today at 330 Wentworth. Madam Chair, through you to Christine.
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct, councillor. We have approximately 30 spaces available at 330 Wentworth Street, which will go a long ways to help us with the overflow that we're dealing with at the, currently at the Mountain Transit Centre.
Izzy, thank you. Izzy, is the goal then to eventually acquire, re-acquire, if you will, all the space at 330 Wentworth? I believe the DARTS vans are still there. So can you just give us some handle on what is your ultimate objective, Christine? Madam Chair, through you.
Certainly through you, Madam Chair. We are working on the ultimate solution for a new maintenance and storage facility for transit. The difficulty with reuse of 330 Wentworth Street is that we would then in turn have to find another facility or build a new facility for the works uses that are currently in that building and utilizing that space. We, I think, will be reporting soon on the options for a new maintenance and storage facility. And encouragingly, we have the announcement with the new federal funding. So that's something we're working on with other departments in the city, and we'll be reporting back on soon.
So just last question then, Christine. Based on that answer, so is this with the $311,000, then, is this temporary for these 30-some-odd buses? Or will the 30 stay there and you're still working on the new facility as well, Madam Chair? Through to Christine. Just so that I'm clear.
Yes. The 30 will, up to 30, will be relocated to 330 Wentworth Street. The $311,000 will be used to facilitate, for example, fare collection equipment that we need at that location. Should those, should we ultimately have a second facility, then the majority of that equipment could be relocated along with the 30 buses to the new location.
With all those answers in place, I'm happy to support this. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. So moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Jackson, the report to use vacated space at 330 Wentworth Street for the HSR. May I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion. All those in favor? Carried. I'll get this right yet. Okay. Item, added item 10.1, notice of motion. Councillor Marula, please introduce your notice of motion on behalf of councillor Farr respecting a temporary road closure. I understand you'll be asking to waive the rules to be, for this?
Yes, indeed. And it's before you, and it's regarding the temporary road closure for an untitled culinary event on, that's wrong, no. And it's before you, and it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Collins, to waive the rules and to introduce it as a motion.
So moved by councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Collins to waive the rules. We don't have to, do we vote? All in favor? Carried.
Now moved by myself, seconded by councillor Collins, to introduce it as a motion.
Okay. Moved by councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Collins to move the motion. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. General information, item 11.1, may I have a motion to approve the changes to the outstanding business list as outlined in item 11.1, moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Conley. All those in favor? Carried. We don't have any private and confidential, may I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Jackson. Thank you for another lovely meeting of the Public Works Committee.